On a call to order, the regular meeting of the Township of Morris Planning Board for June 2nd, 2025. A legal notice required in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act has been satisfied, and a statement certifying same will be executed. If you'd all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to
Here.
the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Mr. Laney.
Here.
Mr. Warner.
Here.
Mr. Buich.
Here.
Mr. Barry.
for all.
Here.
Oops.
Nice on your C and D, I hope you.
It's got me every time, too.
Okay. So, moving on, we have a couple of public hearings today. We've talked about a little bit before, but you want to introduce the first one, Sonia?
Every time.
Okay. Okay.
It's red down here, so that's very confusing.
Yes, for application in PBO 625 Lynn Horowitz.
Did you call her all, Sonia?
Yes. Mr. Arleso. This is plot out by minor subdivision, this is block 3105, lot 6, 6 Egbert Avenue in
Here.
Mr. Noda.
Here.
Mr. Ngan.
Here.
Mr. Flowers.
Here.
Mr. Fine.
the RA 25 zone.
Here.
Mr. Murphy.
Applicant proposes minor subdivision to create one additional lot.
Here.
Mr. Benwa.
Here.
Mr. Quillen.
Chairman, I did have an opportunity to review the notice, found the content to
Here.
be sufficient, found it to be timely served, certified mail on May 20, published on May 18, both at least 10 days prior to this evening, so the board does have jurisdiction to hear and decide the application.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Warner?
Good evening, folks. Simone Cali, Cali Law LLC, on behalf of the applicants Lynn and Howard Horowitz.
Okay.
As Ms. Sonia just recited, we are here tonight seeking minor subdivision approval and bulk variance relief. We have a pretty vanilla application that we're going to present to you guys this evening, and unless you have any preliminary questions for me, because I know you have some other matters on the agenda, we can jump right into it. I have two witnesses tonight, our project engineer and our planner, and I will call our project engineer to take you through the proposal.
Okay. Do you want to swear everyone in?
Certainly, and I'll swear all four witnesses, folk witnesses, as well as our two board professionals. If you'll all raise your right hand, do all of you swear to God or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Thank you all.
First, Josh, can you please state your name and spell it for the record?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Joshua Weary, last name W.I.R.R.Y.
Can you please provide the board with your qualifications and experience?
Sure. So, I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. I graduated from New Jersey Institute of Technology with a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering. I'm a principal at Dynamic Engineering located in Cheston, New Jersey, and I testified before various boards throughout the years as well.
And your license is in good standing?
That's correct.
I'll accept your qualifications. Go ahead.
Thank you. Did you or somebody under your supervision prepare the plans that were submitted as part of this application?
Yes, that's correct.
Great. Would you take the board through the existing conditions and the proposal, please?
Right, too.
If you use the other one.
Okay.
Thank you.
Test, test.
Maybe you see the other.
Oh, it's on.
And now it's on.
Test, test. Sorry about that. Okay, so I'd like to start off by describing the site, and then we'll get into the proposal tonight. Our first exhibit, our own exhibit tonight, is entitled Minor Subdivision Plan. It was prepared by Dynamic Survey LLC. It was included in our application package to the board.
That's last revised March 13th?
Yes, that's correct.
You don't have to mark up the exhibit, you could just reference it, since it was more than 10 days in advance.
Perfect. Okay. And for the record, the exhibit's at a scale of 1 inch, it goes 20 feet, and north is to the top of the page. So, the property is located at 6 Egbert Avenue, is further identified as Block 3105, Lot 6. And as you can see, the property is what's known as a through-lot, as it has two access points, one access along Egbert Avenue to the west, another access along Conklin Avenue to the east. The entire property is approximately 0.98 acres and contains two residential dwellings. We can refer to the main dwelling to the west, which has access on Egbert Avenue, and then the secondary dwelling to the east has access along Conklin Avenue. This secondary dwelling is a pre-existing non-conforming structure that encroaches within the Conklin Avenue right-of-way. And for reference, the structure was built in approximately 1890, which predates Conklin Avenue. So, our proposal tonight is to subdivide the existing Lot 6 into two parcels, starting with proposed Lot 6.01 to the left. This is the larger property to the west, consisting of 0.725 acres, or approximately 31,557 square feet, and includes the main dwelling along Egbert Avenue. Test, test? Okay. So, maybe just let me repeat that. Proposed Lot 6.01 is on the left, or the main dwelling on the west of the property includes 0.725 acres, or 31,557 square feet, and includes the main dwelling. Next is the proposed Lot 6.02 to the right. This is the smaller property to the east, containing 0.258 acres, or approximately 11,250 square feet, and includes the secondary dwelling. So, earlier this year, the Township Committee adopted ordinance 04-25, which modified the zoning boundaries in this area to place the proposed Lot 6.01 in the RA 25 zone, and the proposed Lot 6.02 within the RA 11 zone, and that was done to be consistent with the adjacent properties within the area. So, from a zoning standpoint, the proposed Lot 6.01 on the left complies with all the requirements within the RA 25 zone. There's no variances required for that lot. Proposed Lot 6.02 requires three variances, however, a majority of them are due to the location of the existing dwelling on the property. So, getting into those variances, the first one, a minimum lot depth of 100 feet is required, whereas 96.6 feet is proposed. However, I wanted to note that the property does comply with the minimum lot area, as well as the minimum lot width requirements for that zone. A minimum front yard setback of 35 feet is required, whereas negative 20.3 feet is proposed. And again, this is due to the existing structure being located within the actual right-of-way, and the applicant's actually in the process of submitting or applying for a license to maintain that condition in town. And then lastly, the third variance, a minimum side yard setback of 15 feet is required, whereas 7.5 feet is provided, and again, that's due to the existing location of the structure on the property. There were a few items that were brought up as part of the TCC meeting that we had earlier this year. There are a few locations of fence, the applicant's fence that encroaches within the adjacent properties. They're currently working with the contractor to fix the situation, and hopefully have that done and resolved by the end of this week. There are a few existing utility poles, as well as overhead service lines that provide electric and communication services to both of the dwellings. The township engineer asked us to reach out to JCPN L and to confirm if they would require any easements for these services. So, our office is also coordinating that. The JCPN L plans to have a technician visit the site to confirm this within the next week or so, and if an easement would be deemed required, the applicant will work to have that established. Regarding sewer, currently, the two structures share a single sanitary sewer connection to the street, and as such, our office is currently investigating the most efficient way to provide two separate services for each property, as well two separate meters, as requested by the township. The applicant is currently working with a contractor as well to obtain quotes, and we will continue to work with the township engineer to make sure that this is done according to plan as well. And then lastly, for water, per the SMC MUA or the Water Department, they recently confirmed that there's two separate service lines, two separate water meters for the two buildings, which is good news. However, they did confirm that an easement would be required as the service to get to 6.02 travels through Lot 6.01, so an easement would need to be put in place, which the applicant would agree to have established. And I believe this guy that wraps up my direct testimony.
No further questions.
Any questions? Yes.
I have a question. The water service running all the way through the property is a legacy thing, obviously, but isn't there a water line in Conklin as well? Couldn't they come into that lot from the other side?
I don't believe there is. I know that the SMC MUA confirmed that it comes through the Lot 6.01, so they recommend just simply putting an easement in place to accommodate that service line.
Yeah, and if there's a problem, they dig up the whole, they dig up the whole thing.
Well, the applicant is working to, you know, put in a separate sewer line right now as well, which is a huge cost for them, so we are working to make sure that that is in place, but they do intend to keep the existing water line and then put the appropriate easement in place.
And then that easement would be between the applicant, the second party of the lot, you know, and the utility, being that it's serving to the meter as opposed to behind the meter.
Yeah, I understand.
Right.
I'm a little curious. Right now, the application is really to separate the lots and to separate, because of that, the infrastructure, various infrastructures. No planned changes to the building or anything at this point.
That is correct. Other than fixing the fence encroachments, there's really no site improvements.
The terms of the license that you're working with on that, would that, you know, if, what happens down the road if we approve, you know, this with the variances for where it is, and something, and major improvements to the, to the, to the structure are made? Is that grandfathered in, or do you revert to, would it revert to the zoning?
Any future improvements to that, that lot would be subject to our zoning standards.
Okay.
So, if they were looking to do a building addition to that, particularly since there's an encroachment in the township.
Right. So, basically, if it stays as it is, it's okay, we're not changing anything, but if there's any substantial changes, like if you wanted to tear it down and build new, then everything would have to be fit to?
Absolutely. They tore it down, it'd be subject to viewing it as a vacant lot.
Correct.
Okay.
Things like lot area, lot, you know, they, you know, building envelope.
Right.
The more traditional building envelope would come into play.
Okay.
Et cetera. Neither a subdivision approval nor a license agreement should be granted by the governing body would supersede or change that back.
Okay.
They'd still be subject to that. You can look at the license with the township as something that would have, could have been addressed with or without the subdivision. With or without the subdivision, understanding that both structures are over 100 years old, and that's an existing non-conforming well predating zoning by decades.
Predating.
It could have been addressed as more of a re-lobot, and then subdivided and then modified appropriately.
Okay. Thanks.
I'm still a little fuzzy on the whole license. Could someone maybe just summarize what it is that the license is for? So, the license would be for the continued encroachment into the right-of-way of the existing structure. That existing structure is the carriage house. Permission from the governing body on behalf of the township to do what, I guess, has been done since Conklin's been there. What it asks is, they're not asking to do anything different. No. Maintaining existing non-conforming use. Based on the age of the structure, the? I've just never heard it called a license before. It's just the permission from the governing body to authorize the continuation of the encroachment. It legalizes it. And that structure may very well date, well, predate Conklin as a right-of-way.
Sure, I'm sure it does, yeah.
Particularly looking to the other side and a small portion of land that goes into neighboring jurisdictions.
I have a quick question, Mr. Chairman, related again to the license, and I don't want to get too bogged down on this, and I think this would be for you, and that is, is there sequencing here? Like, do you get the license first? And, I mean, it doesn't matter, the planning board first and then the license? If the planning board approves and the license, we assume the license will be approved because it's been there, the structure's been there before Conklin, is that correct?
Yeah. It's fair to understand that the applicant and township are working together mutually to resolve the issue. It's not a position of contention. It's well documented that it historically was there and entitled to be there. It's certainly appropriate to have it as a condition of approval and to grant approval subject to, to our chairman's point, that, you know, a third-story addition later in the right-of-way would certainly be subject to a board application, as well as a modification of that license.
Okay.
To increase that encroachment.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have a couple of questions. The first is about the electrical service that you mentioned, and the fact that there might be an easement required, and you have an inquiry out about that.
That is correct, yes.
Can you describe the electrical service? Does it come down through what you're proposing to be 6.01 down to 6.02?
Sure, yeah. So, the, there's, I believe there's two poles, and the overhead lines run through along the northern property line, and they provide service to each of the buildings. So, the, as part of the subdivision, the township asked us to reach out to JCPN L and to confirm if they would require any easements, and make sure that they are documented on the plans as well. So, that's what we're doing in the process right now.
So, the, it's the utility that would require the easement from 6.02 so that they can serve 6.01?
Correct.
Okay. And then my other question, this is about something that might be extremely obvious to everyone, but I just want to make sure. The dividing line on this survey?
Yes.
Does that exactly match the action already taken by the Township Committee to rezone what you're asking us to make 6.02?
Yes, that's correct. The subdivision was done in coordination with the zoning efforts to rezone the properties. That's correct.
Thought it was worth asking. The answer is yes.
Can't assume anything.
Yeah.
Good question.
We didn't create, we alleviated or eliminated any split-zone lot.
Correct.
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mission accomplished.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay. Oops, I'm sorry, Ms. Flowers?
The TCC had asked, and maybe I missed this, but the, that triangular property across from Conklin, what's, what can you tell us about that? What's there now? What's going to happen to it? Yeah, so the applicant also owns that small property. It's not developed, I believe it's wooded and grass right now, an open space, and the applicant is coordinating with the adjacent properties to sell that, that portion of their property.
But that's not a part of either one of these lots. It's already a separate tax lot, isn't it?
It's on the east side of Conklin Avenue, separated from this parcel, so they're taking care of that separately from this application.
Separate lots couldn't be joined, obviously, with Conklin there, and actually, that is a split municipal lot.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Fight march on over. The census just closed there, annexation. Not to wait until next year.
Any other questions? Okay, you want to? Next witness?
Mr. Chairman, our last witness is our planner.
Mr. Chairman, did you want to open to public question?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
After both?
Let's wait till after both.
We're up to planner.
Thank you for the reminder, though.
Please state your name and spell it for the record.
Paul Ricky, R-I-C-C-I.
You were already sworn in at the beginning of the day.
Yep.
Yeah, that's right.
Can you please?
Well, now we believe that really is his name, though.
Can you please provide the board with your qualifications and experience?
Yes, I'm a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I've been licensed since the year 2000. I'm also a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners. I have a master's degree in city and regional planning, which I received from Rutgers University in 1997. Currently a municipal planning consultant in six towns. I've testified throughout many boards throughout the state, I believe, over 250 right now. I've testified in front of this board several times, recently on the golf course application, amongst other applications as well. My license is in good standing as well.
Okay. Please proceed.
Paul, what did you review in preparation of your testimony this evening?
I reviewed the subdivision plats. I reviewed, I visited the subject property, professional reports, called the applicant, reviewed your master plan, and pertinent sections of your zoning ordinance, essentially.
Yeah, I think it was clear.
Sure, I mean, I think it's quite clear that this is an exceptional, very unique situation that's occurring. It's not too often that you hear about a property that exists in 1894 in a state, then a roadway ends up through it, and who knows what happened back then? But this is clearly an exceptional situation, which I think the law was anticipating when we talk about hardships under the C1 provision. Just one point of clarification, if we have a negative 20.3-foot setback, I assume it's my understanding that this board will be granting a zero-foot setback, with the understanding that the Township Council in its agreement will allow for that structure to remain in the right-of-way. Is that accurate? I don't think this board is granting a negative 20-point, right? You're granting a zero-foot setback, and with the understanding that the council through its agreement would allow for the continuation of the structure to remain in the right-of-way. I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, I think that's fair, because the governing body has the authority to grant the balance of the relief sought, or that already exists, so, yeah.
I don't want to, I'll try not to be repetitive with the information said by the site engineer, but this is an oversized 42,878, 807-square-foot lot. It's both in your R25 district and your R11 district. What's important from a planning perspective is that both properties will meet the minimum lot area requirement. The, I guess, the normally lot will still remain slightly oversized, whereas the RA 11 lot would be essentially meet the zone requirements for the zone. There's also, as you heard from the site engineer, we're seeking a lot depth variance. I think it's, I don't want to call it technical in nature, but there are some ambiguities to the lot that create that variance. It's measured by your code at 96.6 feet, where 100 feet is required. You probably saw on the subdivision plat that the northerly property line is 104.45 feet depth, in depth, and the southerly property line, it's somewhat irregular, it moves in one direction, and then it has a slight bend in it, and that measures 97.28 feet, because the way the lot depth measurement is made, it's calculated, there's a measurement made in the middle, and that results in that variance. It's my opinion that it's substantially consistent with the zone plan, and that the lot width itself is required to be 75 feet, where 114.5 feet is required, so, so the width exceeds, and we're slightly under on the depth, but most importantly, we meet the minimum lot area requirement. Also, practically speaking, because the structure is 20.3 feet into the right-of-way, the lot will feel deeper as well because of that structure, because we're, part of the home is not on the property per se, right? So, it's going to feel deeper, so in terms of having the feel of a 100-foot lot, this will be, will be provided as part of this application. I believe, despite these conditions, that this still results in sound land use planning, it's a means of legalizing a longstanding, pre-existing, non-conforming condition associated with that township agreement. Again, for me, most importantly, by meeting the minimum lot size requirements, that's going to advance the purpose of the municipal land use law that all state. And looking at your, the bulk chart, it reveals to me that the building coverage, lot coverage is well under the ordinance requirements, that shows that overdevelopment's not occurring as part of this subdivision as well. So, in terms of the pre-existing, non-conforming conditions, the existing side yard setback you heard from the site engineer, that's not being changed. That's an existing condition today. That proposed subdivision line does not alter that, so if this subdivision did not occur, that would be a pre-existing condition today. That is a legal, pre-existing, non-conforming condition that, in my opinion, we're entitled to the C1 hardship for that exceptional situation, for a pre-existing, non-conforming condition. We also advance at least one purpose of your master plan, maintain the diversity of housing, but encourage infill and stabilization of current residential areas, rather than continuing sprawl patterns of development. You know, development is remaining as is. And for these reasons, this application, under your C2 criteria, with the benefits outweigh the detriment, advances at least two criteria of the municipal land use law. Purpose A promotes the establishment of appropriate population densities and concentrations, that's based on conforming to the minimum lot area requirements. And Purpose G to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of residential needs, that's in this context, to meet the needs of New Jersey citizens. I believe that the variances could be granted without a substantial detriment to your zone plan and your zoning ordinance. This is something that's such a minor type of application, and it's not anticipated in your master plan, but in terms of meeting your core principles of what the zone plan called for in terms of lot area and the like, we are adhering to that. Again, that the subdivision, or this, the original plating pattern predates the development of Conklin Avenue. That's a, that's a situation that you do not see often, in my opinion. And here, I think we're really generally recognizing the existing conditions of the lots in the area regarding the pre-existing, non-conformities. I believe the lot depth is the minimus in nature, and the fact that the lot area is satisfied, as well as the oversized lot width, that's not a substantial impairment as well. So, I'll just sum up, for all these reasons, I believe that the board has the necessary justification to grant the requested variance relief.
Thank you.
Any questions? Any comments, questions from our professionals? Okay, I will ask for any public questions at this time of either witness. Seeing none, public comments? I'm gathering there aren't any of those either. So, you want to summarize where we are, Mr. Warner, or you have any final statements?
I'm not going to steal.
I'm sorry.
There's nothing further that I could add. We would respectfully request that you act favorably in the application.
Okay.
No surprise, Mr. Chairman, Ms. Cali was more succinct than I. It's a low bar. But we have a minor subdivision with a lot depth, free variant, bulk variances for proposed Lot 602. One is lot depth 96.6 versus 100, one is feet, that is. One is side yard setback 7.5 feet versus 15 feet, and the third, as Mr. Ricky points out correctly, in my opinion, in essence, we'd be granting no front yard setback requirement, or zero, I should say, versus 35 minimum required, whereas the balance of the relief effectively would be one of the conditions of approval, that being a license agreement from the Township Committee. Otherwise, the conditions were set forth and addressed in both the planning memo of April 16 and the, Mr. Voich's engineering memo of May 8, including removal of existing fence encroachments, obtaining the license, the various utility separations vis-à-vis the meters and the services themselves, if necessary, and the easements associated therewith. And I don't think there were any other conditions of approval. As always, a majority for passage by the board, and if it's a motion to grant, I'll assume it's with all the stipulated two conditions.
Does that meet your understanding?
Yes.
That's it.
Okay.
Chairman, just a quick question before we move.
Yes.
The encroachments, if the engineer could just review those again. It looks like there's a board fence that goes on to Lot 8, and it looks like there's a masonry wall. Are those the two encroachments that you're talking about, relocated? We could, Mr. Chairman, we could reopen, correct?
Yes, you can, yes, please, right.
Remain under oath, of course.
Yes, sir. Yeah, so that was actually brought up by the TCC review, and they asked that the applicant go out, stake the property line, confirm all encroachments were brought onto their property. and addressed in both the planning memo of April 16 and the, Mr. Voitsch's engineering memo of May 8, including removal of existing fence encroachments, obtaining the license of the various utility separations vis a vis the meters and the service, the services themselves if necessary, and the easements associated therewith. And I don't think there were any other conditions of approval. As always, a majority for passage by the board. And if it's a motion to grant, I'll assume it's with all the stipulated two conditions.
Does that meet your understanding?
Yes.
I think that's it.
Okay.
Quick question before we move.
Yes.
The encroachments. If the engineer could just review those again. It looks like there's a board fence that goes on to Lot 8, and it looks like there's a masonry wall. Are those the two encroachments that you're talking about relocating?
We could, Mr. Chairman, we could reopen, correct?
Yes, you can, yes, please, right.
Remain under oath, of course.
Yes, sir. Yeah, so that was actually brought up by the TCC review, and they asked that the applicant go out, stake the property line, confirm all encroachments were brought onto their property, which they're currently doing. Our survey team went out there, they staked out the property line, so the contractor and the applicant know exactly where the property line is. And they're working with that contractor to bring any of the fence encroachments off of, off of the adjacent property line. So, any encroachment that's currently on the side property line is going to get brought in.
So the masonry wall would be considered the same as the fence encroachment?
No, I believe it was just the fence encroachment that were being.
So the masonry wall would remain on Lot 8?
Correct.
And how do they deal with that?
I'm sorry, is there, the mason, is it a wall that encroaches from your lot to Lot 8, or is it Lot 8's wall?
Looks to me like it's.
To the northeast corner?
Yes.
And, yeah, along.
Yeah, there's a, the small sliver of retaining wall.
And there's a, there's a functional purpose to that wall with its encroachment.
Only because I heard our, that all the encroachments were going to be removed, it doesn't sound.
No, that one would not. Actually, the, the request, the TCC was to remove the existing fence. Jason Lott, so I may have overstated.
I noticed the masonry wall would be considered a fence. It sounds like it's more of a retaining wall.
Correct.
It says it's a retaining wall.
The grade drops off pretty significantly in that area. I'm going to believe, you're correct, yes, that's a, a retaining wall.
Thank you. We'll make sure the condition is more specific.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move that we, we move for approval with all of the conditions that were outlined.
I'll second that.
Can you?
Yes.
Is it in order?
Yes.
The none?
Yes.
It's a flower.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to our next item on business. The investigation and designation of non-condemn, non-condemnation redevelopment area. For the Morris County Building Grounds. Yes.
No, I, sorry, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to, yes, we are going to present the findings for our study.
Okay.
So the area need study. I called back from retirement.
He's in the wrong chair.
Paul and I co-authored the report, but he was certainly integral into it. And so I've asked him to come back because he had a lot of the background and context for the report. So he is going to present the findings for the board. I am going to broadcast, or not broadcast, put up on the screen some of the images from the report. I just, if you give me one minute.
Okay.
While, while, while we're doing this, the chair's permission, I could give a quick context.
Do, do we need to swear in, Mr. Phillips?
I'm certainly going to swear in. Now, I'm going to voir dire him for his qualifications as well, frankly, but while he's standing, if you'll raise your hand, sir, do you swear to God or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. I was kidding about the voir dire. I think the board will accept you.
Yes, I, I, yes.
But.
Yeah, yeah, get it ready.
And, and, and while Liz is tending to the technological aspects, this is an area in need of redevelopment and non-condemnation. As the board will remember, the governing body directed the board to conduct this study and to have this hearing thereon. We had a resolution that we adopted a couple of meetings ago, if I recall correctly, authorizing Mr. Phillips and Liz Laney to put together the area needed redevelopment study. It's essentially done in isolation. The site, or here, we have two lots, portions of two lots that are being considered, and you match the lots. We'll hear more about this from the appropriate person, our planner. But to the criteria, to see if one or more of the criteria in Section 5 of the Local Redevelopment and Housing Law is satisfied, and thus, the, if so, the site or, or a portion thereof would qualify as an area in need of redevelopment. Again, the emphasis on this being a non-condemnation redevelopment does not authorize our township governing body to have the authority to, to condemn, to exercise the powers of the eminent domain. Otherwise, Sonia Athlee did the noticing. We published twice, seventeen, at least seventeen, or at least 10 days prior to this evening, and provided copies of the study, which has been publicly available, if I recall correctly, to the Office of Public Advocacy at the state, the county planning board, and adjacent clerks. So, here we are. I do have a resolution in the event, well, really regardless of what the determination is by the planning board, but it's provided in the affirmative that we find that it is an area in need of redevelopment. That's not going to influence your decision. You'll hear from Paul and anyone else to make that determination. And what you do, once you adopt this resolution, it is a recommendation to the governing body. The governing body would then have the ultimate authority to make that determination. I hope I didn't make it any more confusing than it was before. We have done this before, but it's been a little while.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I, I would appreciate a thumbnail overview of why we did this study and what we're linking it to as a requirement or need of the township, just so we are all kind of operating for the same context.
Sure, and since I've already stolen just a bit of thunder from Mr. Phillips, I'm not going to steal anymore. I know it's in his report. I know he intended to address the context as well as the criteria and how the property satisfies the criteria.
And lastly, my other question is, how are you going to get to that property?
How are we going to get, well, I think that's going to be part and parcel.
Okay. Looks like it's landlocked.
Of, of that. But, so without any further ado, with the chair's permission, we'll turn it over to Mr. Phillips. And this is a public hearing. Who are here, the young gentleman all the way to the back there, they certainly can ask questions and, and make comments.
Yes, Mr. Phillips.
Thank you. Nice to see you all again. And for the record, I am a licensed professional planner in New Jersey, and my license remains in good standing.
Still paying the fee, correct?
Yeah, I still pay the fee. And I was formerly the managing principal of Phillips Price. I am now serving in a consulting capacity to the firm, so I work for Liz Laney now. And Liz, basically, to be quite serious, has been doing yeoman's work on the affordable housing plan, not only in Morris, but in several other communities, which she inherited from me. And she has literally been working till midnight and nights and weekends. And I kind of volunteered to take the lead on this particular redevelopment investigation, because I think, as the board knows, I do have quite a bit of redevelopment experience. And I think that that kind of did provide some relief to Liz. The other thing you should know is I did make a commitment to the township, to the governing body, to Tim Quinn, and also, you know, I had conversations with Rick By that despite my retirement, that I would stay involved, particularly through the housing element and fair share plan. I made that commitment, and, because I do have the institutional memory, and I took the lead in the preparation of the prior housing plan. And as, as you will note, that this is going to come back to the third round housing plan, which was also part of our fourth round plan. But I'll get into that in a, in a, in a bit. So as Steve indicated, this is the public hearing, where this board is going to basically make a recommendation to determine whether certain property that is located in the vicinity of Catch Road qualifies as a non-condemnation area of redevelopment in accordance with the Enabling Statute, which is the local redevelopment and housing law. The area that is being considered consists of portions of two existing tax lots. They're known as lots 1 and 1.01 in Block 1901. They total just over three and a half acres in size, and each of the lots is owned by Morris County. I think as Mr. Warner mentioned, the governing body, the township committee, back in April, authorized by resolution this board to undertake the investigation. And I think at the May meeting, the board, by resolution, authorized the firm of Phillips Price to actually conduct the study on its behalf. We then prepared a report, which summarized the results of our investigation, which has been shared with members of the board. So if you've had the chance to read it, you kind of know what's coming. But I'd like to just kind of go through the report, and then I'd be happy to answer any questions that members of the board or the public may have. So, again, the study area consists of about three and a half acres of portions of two lots owned by the county. Lot 1, which is the larger lot, is over 100 acres in size. It has frontage on Catch Road, as well as Hanover Avenue and Raynor Road. The parcel is improved with multiple buildings, which comprise county facilities and all the associated appurtenances, including parking areas. The report lays out this roughly a dozen facilities, either related to or owned by the county. I'm not going to go through all of them. They're, they're indicated on Page 2 of the report. But they are accessed by two driveways from West Hanover Avenue and one from Raynor Road. There are also solar fields, as this board is aware, that were developed several years back along West Hanover Avenue. That's on the Lot 1, the larger piece. And also, in the southeast portion of Lot 1, is Catch Road Field. Catch Road Field includes a soccer field, playground, and associated driveway and parking areas that are accessed directly from Catch Road. That is on land that is leased by the township from Morris County for those fields and facilities. The township also maintains the field and those facilities as well. There are also, as you can see from the slide, there are numbered, maybe the, the larger slide of one, Lot 1, Liz, would be helpful. There are also open space areas, yeah, as you can see, located primarily in the southeast section of Lot 1, which are unimproved, mostly wooded lands. As you can see on the other side of the soccer field, there are also some wetland areas here, and none of the existing driveways within the larger lot actually provide access to this portion of the lot. Lot 101 is a three-acre parcel. And that consists, also with frontage on Catch Road, currently improved with a 10-bedroom supportive housing facility for individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities, and that is administered by Arc Morris. There is, if you could show, to go to the blow up, Liz, I think that would be better. Yeah, that shows, you can see on that blow up, there's a driveway from Catch Road that leads to a parking area adjacent to the home. Arc Morris has a ground lease agreement with Morris County to operate that facility, and has the full responsibility for the maintenance and upkeep of the premises, the buildings, the appurtenances, the equipment, and the like. As you can see from the aerial to the rear of Lot 101, there is unimproved wooded areas, which actually constitute the bulk of that lot. That lot, lot is about, is three acres in size, and about 1.7 acres in the rear are undeveloped. And this acreage, as you can see from the aerial, it doesn't have direct street, frontage, and access to Catch Road, other than through existing facilities, basically the building and parking area. Lot 101 also borders Lot 1 in the rear, as you can see from the exhibit. So the summary of the study area encompasses undeveloped portions of Lot 1 and Lot 101, which lack street frontage and roadway access. We, as part of the normal investigation, we look at the master plan and zoning for these properties. Our report on Page 8 discusses the study area in relation to the master plan. Just, I want to just highlight two things, which are sort of pertinent to the investigation. The first is that Morris County, back in 2012, identified certain lands within the larger lot, the 100-plus acre lot, which is Lot 1, which were located directly west of the existing housing development, Morris Muse, which is shown just to the top. They basically identified those lands as a potential site for affordable housing. However, I think, as many of you know, this area was subsequently improved with the solar facility installation. But I think the point here is this area was basically, while not the same exact location, it was part of Lot 1 that was targeted for a potential additional affordable housing development on those county-owned lands. The second thing from the master plan is the study area. Basically, if you look at the surrounding context, it encompasses a variety, variety of either specialized and/or affordable housing developments, which would include the Morris Muse Apartments, which I just spoke of, the supportive housing of Arc. There's also a nursing home facility as part of the county facilities. So the potential redevelopment of the area for affordable housing would be consistent with the established land use pattern in this immediate neighborhood. The, just for point of information, we always look at the zoning, the entirety of this study area and lots 1 and 1.01 in their entirety are within your OSGU zone district. So this board has considered and also recommended redevelopment area designations in a number of prior instances in the past 10 years, where I conducted the investigation on your behalf. Some of you were here for this, some of you are new. But just to give you a brief history, I think the first one we did was the Colgate redevelopment area. We then did the Abbey, which was part of an area in need of redevelopment. Subsequently, did a redevelopment plan. And we also did a redevelopment investigation for a office building. I think it was at 340 Mount Kemble Avenue, although no redevelopment plan was ever put in place for that particular property. So you, certainly there's familiarity on the, on the part of this board with the, with the process. But again, just to kind of go through it, per the redevelopment statute, an area can be deemed in need of redevelopment after there's a, a public hearing, which is this evening. That public hearing has to be noticed. And ultimately, it's the governing body that makes the determination. The statute says, planning board conducts the public hearing. Planning board makes a recommendation to the governing body, and the governing body will ultimately make determination that an area either does or doesn't qualify for designation. And the statute lists roughly eight conditions or criteria, where any one of those eight, in some cases, there are multiple times where a condition is met, any one or more, if it meets the criteria, it can satisfy the requirements for redevelopment area designation. And just to provide some additional context, in the past, with those buildings that I cited, the Colgate, they were buildings. They were buildings that were largely either vacant or underutilized or abandoned. And at that point, we were basically focused on either the B or D criteria. And B is the discontinuance of the use of buildings that were previously either in manufacturing, or commercial, or retail, or an office park, or there were sufficient vacancies in those buildings. The D criteria are basically areas with buildings that were either dilapidated, obsolescent, faulty arrangement or design. And certainly, with these other, in these other instances, we were able to demonstrate, because of these and, and other factors in some cases, that these areas were proving to be detrimental to public health and safety in their basic vacant and disused condition. To the focus of tonight's meeting is on the C criteria. I'm going to read it, okay? And I'm actually going to read it right from the statute. Land that is owned by the municipality, the county, a local housing authority, redevelopment agency, or redevelopment entity, or unimproved vacant land that has remained so for a period of 10 years prior to adoption of the resolution. And that would be the adoption of the. And that would be the adoption of the resolution that I spoke about previously. And that by reason of its location, remoteness, lack of means of access to developed sections or portions of the municipality, or topography or nature of the soil, is not likely to be developed through the instrumentality of private capital. That is the C criteria. So with that in mind, our evaluation essentially revealed the following with regard to the study area. So as I described, it consists of portions of two tax lots, two tax lots, under common ownership by Morris County. The land within the study area, as you saw, these lands currently unimproved, they lack street, frontage, and roadway access. The portion of lot 101 consists of sort of excess unused lands that are nevertheless developable. These are the lands behind the existing ARC facility. The unused portion of lot, as I mentioned, is actually greater in size than the used portion of the lot. However, these lands, as I mentioned, cannot otherwise be accessed from a public right-of-way, the closest being Catch Road, without impacting the existing facilities. And I'll get to your question, Linda, on that, which have existed, actually, these facilities for over 30 years. The portion of lot one in the study area, which again is the larger lot with multiple facilities owned by the county, this too is developable. This portion also is cut off from the balance of the lot by other existing facilities. And for example, the township leased Catch Road Field, and specifically its driveway and parking area restrict access to these unused lands. Other county facilities, including the solar installation, ultimately ended up restricting access to these areas. So again, access cannot be provided without impacting existing facilities. There are also, I think one of the exhibits showed that there were the wetlands. Yeah, there are also wetlands which encroach on a portion of this area of lot one, which also limit the ability to access these developable acres, three and a half acres comprising portions of lot one and lot 1.01. So in short, the study area comprises undeveloped acreage, relatively limited in size, and locationally challenged. So this acreage is therefore, in our opinion, unlikely to be developed through the instrumentality of private capital alone. And by that, you know, let's just take by example a market-rate housing, or even inclusionary housing, where there'd be market-rate and affordable housing. That is definitely something that is not in really the mix for this excess-challenged land. However, a 100% affordable multifamily project would be appropriate in the study area, given its proximity to all these neighboring related developments. Morris Muse, there's the Dean Gallagher Congress Living, there's the ARC facility. And Linda, to your point, the township had identified these lands as basically a suitable location for providing affordable housing, that it can assist the township in meeting a portion of its third-round obligation. And this gets back to the litigation involving the Red Bulls, where we had to provide for an additional 50 units of affordable housing, which is ultimately basically why this property was designated, these portions in terms of their location and delineation, why these lands consisted of the study area, which I think essentially answers your question. So construction of affordable housing on this land is also unlikely through the instrumentality of private capital alone. Some form of public intervention or subsidy is necessary. And again, especially that where there are going to be no market-rate units to internally subsidize the overall project. So in that regard, the redevelopment area investigation, determination would provide access to certain financial incentives for the developer, mostly in terms of tax credits, and also in terms of a redevelopment of the potential for long-term tax abatement, all of which puts the affordable housing developer in a far more competitive position because, and I know, Tanya, you know this, tax credit housing is very competitive. So this designation would ultimately be necessary. But notwithstanding that, the area still has to qualify on its own. You know, you can't really sort of have the tail wag the dog. And we think basically, for the reasons that we've expressed, that this particular area does meet the so-called C criteria due to its size, its location, its remoteness, and lack of access to the public roadway system, is unlikely, again, in our opinion, to be developed through the instrumentality of private capital. And in that regard, we believe that this board is in a position to make an affirmative determination or recommendation that the area would qualify under the C criteria or C condition of the statute. And Linda, in answer to your direct question about where's the access going to come from, the contemplated access at this stage would be via an easement through the portion of the property, adjoining property where the Catch Road Field is. And that would have to be basically somewhat of a reconfiguration of that. But it would continue to provide access to both Catch Field, and it would provide access into this development behind the ARC, because you can't provide access without impacting ARC through lot 1.01 alone.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So I'm happy to take questions. I don't know if there's any, it doesn't look like public, but certainly if there are questions.
Yes.
So it is related back to the litigation at the Red Bulls, and they called for 50 units, but this is
That's correct.
This is three plus acres, right?
Yep.
So potentially, there could be more than 50?
Well, I will say that, you know, we've been dealing with concepts at this stage in terms of what we looked at, in terms of the product type, and trying to maintain a density and height which is compatible with existing facilities as well as the surrounding neighborhood, this is about as much as we could get
Okay.
Within that area. I will tell you that.
Any other questions?
Mr. Cohen?
I have a similar question to Ms. Murphy's. In terms of the, and you can tell me that this is beyond the scope of what we're to consider here tonight, but I'm curious about the exact shape and size of this property, this study property? Why that particular size and that particular shape? If it were 30 feet wider to the west, just to give an offhand example, there'd be more room.
Yeah.
There seem to have been some negotiations with the county, perhaps?
That is true.
Okay.
There were negotiations, George, with the county, with the prospective redeveloper, and also the township and its professional staff were very cognizant of trying to make this fit without severely impacting existing facilities, including the township soccer field. And in the other direction, as you can see from the aerial, you have Morris Muse, and then you have an intervening out parcel, right? And you just have nowhere else to go. And what we really wanted to do was, and also, it doesn't quite show here, but the one map that showed the wetlands also presents a constraint. So we had this one blob of about three and a half acres that we could use without really seriously impacting other facilities, knowing full well that we'd have to have an access easement in through the Catch Road Field. But we didn't want, we wanted to keep, though, there's township facilities, we wanted to maintain that. So we think we can kind of do that. There may be a slight rearrange of the parking area, but we have room to do that. We didn't want to encroach any further, and that was the only other place to go. And we would have impacted that with a larger site. So ultimately, the area was sort of determined by the concept, if you will. And that's the basis for the portions of lot one and lot 1.01.
And the developer will have to obtain or has obtained agreements with both ARC and the county
Yeah.
To assemble this parcel.
Prospect, prospective redeveloper, yes.
Yep.
Does that mean the developer will own the land or will be township land?
Might be a lease.
Yeah, it's current, well, the operative fact for purposes of the area in need of redevelopment study is it is owned by the county. It is public land. What is envisioned is a donation from the county to the municipality to the prospective redeveloper of the land, and by virtue of that, a transfer with a reverter clause that it must be utilized for affordable housing or will automatically revert back
To the county.
Twice to us and then the county automatically. Then it'll be used for that purpose by the prospective redeveloper, and that is part of the package for the financing of the 100% affordable project. So that the municipal contribution is relatively modest and reasonable. And perhaps I could say that the county was amenable to enhancing what was originally discussed as an area for the entirety of the project, so that we had even more sufficient land to properly plan and fit this 50-unit project in a way that's locally tolerable to everybody.
Well said.
And then, is there
Hopefully.
How, maybe I'm stepping, I'll be stepping ahead of the camera, but how is it the developer has chosen, has the developer chosen? Does it bid process? Or how do we go about choosing a developer to be used, to select a developer?
Certainly getting a little bit beyond the area
Okay.
And I don't mean to
No, if I am, that's fine.
Chill discussion, just don't, my, part of my hesitation and reason for doing that is, like a lot of these academic exercises, we're supposed to view this in quote-unquote isolation, you know, match land with criteria. So the more we delve into other aspects, at least theoretically, someone might say that we're considering things beyond the scope of the authority for this particular task.
I understand.
Mr. Lawson?
I may have a similar question to Ed, so stop me if I'm going in the wrong direction.
I'll wait till you're done.
Our, our purpose here is to agree that this is an area in need of redevelopment. And say to the township committee that we've reviewed it and we agree that it should be in your jurisdiction to approve an area. We're not approving the area in need of redevelopment, we're approving the study.
You're not approving it, you're making the recommendation, the governing body would do the approving, assuming the governing body approves it. The only caveat I would, just for clarification, it's not your job to recommend the approval, it's your job to hear the planner and see if the criteria was satisfied, and then make the appropriate recommendation.
So we're recommending that based upon the planner's study. We agree that this is an area in need of redevelopment based on the C criteria.
That's correct.
We agree that it meets the criteria.
It's county, it's county-owned land, I believe that could constitute an indisputable fact. And then, the, by reason of its location, remoteness, lack of means of access to developed sections or portions of the municipality or topography or nature of the sale, soil, excuse me, it could be any one of those. Our planner has opined that it's multiple of those reasons, that it is not likely to be developed through the instrumentality of private capital. And perhaps you could consider the fact that as of yet, it has not been.
So two questions would be, there's no, and again, if I'm going in the wrong, please stop me. There's no market units proposed for this?
There are no market units proposed for the project that is anticipated to result from, among other things, an area in need of redevelopment finding by the governing body, correct?
We're suggesting that there's 50 units that would wind up being built here.
Well, there was a settlement agreement for 50 units as a result of resolving litigation previously involving property at the former Honeywell site that is now being utilized by the Red Bulls.
Thank you.
So it's about 14 units per acre?
That's about right.
That could be worse, I mean, could be worse, right?
Could be more.
Well, that was kind of the root of my question before.
Depends on what you consider worse or what you consider better.
Well, yeah. Well, so, back in the day, we used to say we wanted six units per acre, and that was like a drop-dead number. Obviously, that's gone out the window.
That was the day.
So that was back in the day.
I'd just like to comment on that.
Five cents once.
Yeah, probably.
That, that is, you know, that units per acre, when it comes to affordable housing, is not realistic because of the cost and the limited rent income that you're going to get from those. So I think the township is doing something very creative. I will say, in a neighboring municipality, there's been 44 units done very beautifully on probably just over an acre. And that's two to, two to three stories. And, you know, you can't, they actually did it in a way to, in this, we're not getting into design elements, but to sort of blend in and, and in some ways, hide, I would say, the density, which wouldn't even be needed necessarily tucked away back there. I think they have plenty of space to do 50 units there. And it's not going to be towering, and it's probably going to be beautiful and really badly-needed housing. I think it's a great opportunity to meet that.
Topography might be such that it
Yeah, it's down.
Down, and so, but, but, but this board may well have an opportunity in the not-too-distant future to address site plan issues vis-à-vis this site, but we should get, and I'm, look at me, I'm doing it, so.
And a redevelopment plan which will, if there's an affirmative determination by the governing body, the next step would be the preparation of a redevelopment plan, which, as you well know, would go to you for consistency review. And then ultimately, if there's a change in the zoning, the redevelopment plan is effectively a change in zoning, a site plan application would go to you. So you get several bites of the apple. If, again, this is affirmatively determined to be in need of redevelopment.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Lawson.
I'd like to make a motion that we recommend to the governing body that this area should be considered an area in need of redevelopment.
May I make a respectful request that we also, that you, the motion also include the adoption of the resolution that was circulated, which finds as such with a bunch of whereas clauses that I won't repeat. But it also specifically references the C criteria that Mr. Phillips discussed. I will amend my motion exactly as our attorney eloquently placed it before us.
I'll second that.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I think it sounds to me like criteria C was written with this lot in mind.
Yeah, surprise, surprise.
And we did, so we did
Oh, I'm sorry, we need, yeah, we do need to open up to public questions or comments and/or. Just, okay, so we will close that, so. Do we have a motion in a second? That is a roll call, I'd two believe.
Yes. Is there an order?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Flowers? Yes. Mr. DuMouw?
Yes.
Mr. Quillen?
Yes.
Mr. Regia?
Yes.
Yes.
You let me some out?
Nope.
No, nine. I think that might count.
As we move on to other matters, do we have anything in the Legislative Committee report?
Nothing.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Don't we have a resolution we have to approve?
Oh, it's, I have decided we're going to put that, it'll be on next week because it came out so late that I suspected this one, people haven't had a chance to look at it.
My apologies for that mix-up. You know, the one and the other were distributed.
I don't know if you did or not, but see, we didn't get it today. I, I didn't. Okay, so, now, okay, at this point, I think we're going to open up the meeting for the public comments before we go into our closed session, so. Any comments from the public? Okay, then we'll close the public comments section and move into our closed session.
I'm moved that we go to closed session.
Sorry, if I could just do a resolution very quickly to go into closed for this particular matter.
I'm sorry, say again?
Yes.
If I could just read a quick resolution to go into closed.
We haven't done this in a long time.
Because it's an Open Public Meetings Act executive session, whereas the Open Public Meetings Act permits exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances. And the public shall be excluded from the discussion of the here-and-after subject, the general nature of which is pending litigation and attorney-client privileged communications relating specifically to the Housing Element and Fair Share Plan for the fourth round prospective and present need obligation. It's anticipated that the above-stated subject matter discussed in closed session may be disclosed to the public upon a determination of the board that the public interest will no longer be served by such confidentiality, and the resolution shall take effect immediately.
So now I move So now I move that we go to closed session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, then we need to stop recording, I guess. And we will not be going back into, what?
I think we might be relocating.
To the other
Are we relocating?
Acceptable.
Oh, okay. And we will not be reconvening, you know, public meeting afterwards? Or do we need to formally adjourn?
We do, we will, I guess
There is no other business to be had. We will, we reconvene to formally adjourn, but there's no business after, so anyone who may be watching at home on Zoom, that is it for the public, other than if you want to watch, adjourn.
Exactly.
So, thank you.
We're going to come back in here to adjourn?
Yes.
Well, we could do it there.
We could, yeah.
As long as we get on the
Yeah.
Of course.